Stealing my gavel.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am your lower Paxton Township manager. In typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda while the board members get settled here, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. This evening, the board meets in business session. We do have a rather busy agenda. Beginning first, under old business, the board will take action to ratify management's execution on various issues related to various insurance coverages of both the township and the authority. Following that, under new business, the board will take action to approve a change order for the Doley Mini Basin B C seven project that related to a sewer and stormwater project. Following that, the board will take action to approve another change order, change order number one, this being for the annual township paving project. After that, the board will take action to adopt an agreement with the Central Dolphin School District, formally establishing a community garden on the grounds of E H Phillips Elementary School. Following that, under subdivision land development items, the board has a number of items, first to include the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh six, which amends the township zoning map to provide for rezoning along Parkway East. And then the board will take action to approve the improvement guarantees, the payment of township and authority bills, and then finally hear any final announcements before finally making a motion to adjourn. With all that said, all the members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Before we get started this evening, I would please ask that if your cellphone is on, that you would please silence it, please, for our business meeting. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors. Would you please stand for a pledge of allegiance? Supervisor Judd will lead us. Thank you. I have approval of the minutes from the July sixteenth, twenty twenty four business meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. At this time, we have public comment. If you are here for anything that is on the agenda, I ask that you wait for your public comment to that agenda item. If you are not here, you just want to talk under public comment, you may come forward now. We ask that you give your name and your address. Is there anybody here for public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is George Glendenning. I live at fifty seven twenty eight Cloverdale Road here in the township. I don't believe I'm on this list here, the your agenda, so I believe I'm okay. It won't take much of your time. It looks like you're going to be busy tonight. I want to first thank you in a way because on August twenty seventh, at the authority meeting I attended and spoke, I believe four of you are on that committee, I believe, at least four of you. And one of our issues was communication, and I just wanted to tell you, we did get a letter from Mr. Weaver dated September sixth. Did all of you get a copy of that letter? Yes, no?
There was one letter we had in our packet at one time. I think that might have been the agenda when before we were, you guys were here the last time, but can I, I'm going to have to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
So that is on the agenda. It's under new business for nine A with Doley with the change order. So at that time, I would ask you if you could speak on that agenda item because it does involve Kenwood, Cloverdale.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else under public comment? Okay. Okay, chairman and board member comments. Board members, do we have any comments?
I have two. We have a big fall fest coming up in George Park on Saturday. It's from twelve to four. We'll be collaborating with the Colonial Park Rotary the first time. Money from the Rotary Club that they have raised sponsors will be going for scholarships for Rotary. It's a family fun. There'll be hay rides. There'll be pumpkins. It's for adults, face painting, all kinds of stuff. It's for adults, too, so please join us. The ribbon cutting will be at quarter of twelve, and that'll be at George Park from twelve to four. Prior to that, the board will be attending H M C Academy Ribbon Cutting. That's on Linglestown Road. It is a new childcare. It's opening up, and they have invited us to attend their ribbon cutting, so we'll be definitely busy that day. Any other comments? Good to go. Okay, managers report.
Madam Chair, I have no official report this evening.
Okay, old business. Action to ratify management's execution on final general casualty pollution and other insurance coverages. Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In relation to the information that's provided in your packet on a public agenda as well, there is a little update to our premium schedule, so I gave you a presentation previously on our lines of coverage for this year. There are two changes to that. One that was noted at the previous meeting, another is a change since then. The first would be the pollution. We did get our policy quote back for that. That policy was for twenty two sixty two, so it increased about a hundred and twenty three dollars for the year. Same provider, same package, same coverages. The other piece was for cyber liability. Working with our new broker, Enders Insurance, we did, we were able to connect with a number of new parties for insurance quotations, and one of those individuals, Beasley, presented a very competitive quote, which enabled us to actually double our coverage levels, yet reduce the actual cost of the premium. So that came down about twelve hundred dollars in total. But otherwise, every other piece is the same as we presented and Andy Enders had presented in the previous business meeting that we had. I'll certainly take any questions and then request, in relation to this being effective for today, we had to execute those contracts, so your action is to ratify our execution of those said documents.
Any questions for Mr. Miller? Any questions from the public? Okay, at this time, we'll take action. Do I have a motion to ratify management's execution on final general casualty pollution and other insurance coverages?
So moved.
Second?
First, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we go on to new business, I failed to report that we did have a public meeting workshop was open to the public at five thirty. It was on economic development. Next week, our workshop will be at five thirty, and that will be for the police and the fire. We also met in executive session after that, and we will not be meeting in executive session after the meeting. New business. Action to approve change order number one from Doley for the Mini Basin B C, C A, C B, C C, C D, eight C, and eight D sewer system improvement project. Mr. Gottschall.
Yes, Madam Chair. Which item are we on again? Actually, I'm just kidding. That, if you could repeat all that, please.
Wait a minute, did I miss something? Okay.
Before the board this evening is change order number one with Dolly Construction, Dolly Construction Corporation. As discussed in the board's most previous meeting, Dolly had been working with the township and our engineers to put forward this change order, which encompasses a, an extension to the contract term, the period term, an addition of sixty one days from August first to October first, twenty twenty four. The other terms of the contract remain similar, as noting the price. Just to give an update as to the project in the field, as of today, the project continues to progress rather, I'll say nicely since our last public meeting with regard to a number of the items that had been outstanding at that point. Just running down a number of the the updates as I had received them as of three P M. this afternoon. Dolly's concrete subcontractor has been working each day to install sidewalks, ADA curbs, and other concrete-related aspects of the project. As of today, twenty of the thirty six ADA ramps were completed, and a few beyond that partially installed as well. They are now currently moved to Kenwood Avenue where they are doing the curbs and sidewalks there. At this point, Dolly has two four-man crews each week to work on that concrete work, as well as some punch list items related to concrete and sidewalk. Dolly also continues to progress nicely on the storm sewer pipe installation and other storm-related structures related to inlets and other things in that regard. The storm sewer project is now continuing onto Cloverdale Road near the intersection of Timber Lane. That is complete, and so now they are in that section as well. The township Storm Sewer Crew is now ninety percent complete on our work related to storm sewer installation on Kenwood Avenue. As it relates to our own crews, as well as Dolly crews, we are still, at this point, waiting on a number of the utilities to relocate their infrastructure, both U G I and P P L. However, both of our crews, Dolly and Township crews, continue to work on our components independent of that utility relocation work. We're just trying to get the stuff done on our own schedule, and and then those utilities will begin to relocate as they are able to. And also lawn restoration work continues to progress. However, noting that a number of properties do still need a second time kind of pass through on that restoration work, but but certainly the weather, as it relates to storm restoration, lawn restoration has been rather cooperative. The the water, you know, certainly helps that that component of the project. So at this point, I think we're in pretty good shape with regards to the contract progress. We feel confident that the the terms of the extension, the contract extension will be met timely, and, you know, at this point, I think it's in order for the board to take action on this change order, which does extend the contract by sixty one days and and allows the contractor to to continue plugging away.
Okay, I just want to make one thing clear, that the top coat will not be put on till spring of twenty twenty five, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, any comments or questions for Mr. Gottschall?
I have a question.
Okay.
When did Dolly sign the the extension contract? The last time we were here, we were waiting. They hadn't signed it yet.
Looks like they signed it on September sixteenth, September sixteen, yep.
Yep.
And actually, Mrs. Lindsay, that what you had noted is mostly and partially, maybe mostly correct. The the top coat, you're correct, is anticipated not to be installed. However, if they can do so before that point, they will certainly do it, so.
Depending if the asphalt plan is open.
Right.
Okay, good. Any other questions from the board, comments?
Just a comment. For those that just came in, there's three chairs up in the front. You may not be able to hold hands, but there are places up here for you to sit down instead of standing in the back. You bet.
All right, Mr. Glennberg.
Thank you, Mrs. Lindsay. Do I need my name again, or you're okay?
Kelly, you have it? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. This is what I was coming to talk about. I do appreciate the communication that Mr. Weaver sent to, I believe, everybody in our seven streets there that is affected. But I don't think you guys evidently received a copy. And and I wanted to bring something to your attention in this, where it talks about seeding and yard restoration and concrete sidewalks and this and that. And in this, it says, Kenwood Avenue parentheses, concrete work is formed, ready to pour. That is not true. That is not true. Today, I went down Kenwood to see for myself to make sure before I came to the meeting. There are still areas that aren't formed, and if they're not formed, they are not concreted. It's curbing and sidewalks on Kenwood Avenue. Now, I don't know what he means by this, because even when we received this, almost the entire street was not formed or concrete in the curbs and sidewalks. Now, they are going, they are proceeding. Last week, they did some, so it is proceeding, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so I don't know where they got the information, but it's not correct, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right, so they are working on it?
They are.
Okay.
But they still need to form some of the sidewalks, and and, you know, I said it before to the committee when I was here, children are walking to school, you know, getting on buses at these intersections, too, that aren't done, and it's just like, I'm surprised parents aren't here coming and, I don't know, maybe they are, but maybe, I don't know, but I'm surprised they aren't.
So they're starting, last time I was there, they're starting at one end, and they're moving towards Beaver Road.
They did the one side, the north side of the street. They did for the most part, not all of it, but they're working on that first, but the south side really needs, I mean, I think it's the whole thing, and and you're talking, what, thirty houses? I don't know, maybe more? This isn't like two or three houses. This is, this is that whole fifty seven hundred block of Kenwood. And now they're starting on Cloverdale where I live. I can't wait till they dig up the front. I just want it over with, you know, that's what I want. But I just want to bring something, you know, I believe this this contract's eighteen million, and I just think, you know, at the at the August twenty seventh meeting, one of the men here in the audience with the public comments made a comment about how many people have been in our neighborhood, and not even half of the people raised their hands. And I just want to really, I said it before, and I want to say it again, go to these places and view these things. Look at them, and just just don't go at once. This is a three-year project that was supposed to end today. It's not done, as you well know, so just don't go like on a three-year contract, go one time and say, okay, it's over. Go back quarterly. Go back and look and see what's going on, everybody, please, because then you see what's going on and you you understand it better. I mean, if it was your neighborhood, you wouldn't enjoy this at all. The streets are bumpy. I really, I don't want, I'm not negative, but is it Brad, I believe? You said it's hopefully get that second, I don't even think we're going to get the base code in. I hope we do. It'd be great to have it all done, but I just wonder. Anyways, I want to keep going because I know you've got a lot here tonight, you know, but please visit these projects. Take a look at them, please. So I'm going to give you a proposal tonight that's something you're going to laugh about later. Maybe you'll laugh now. I really don't care. Here's my proposal. Meadowbrook, Oak, Palmer, Kenwood, Cloverdale, Timber, and Raybuck, okay? We've had stress. We've had frustration. We've had inconvenience. People have put money out. I had one neighbor tell me last week she's replaced three tires because they can't patch them, okay? That's just one neighbor that told me. Other neighbors have told me. I know the man across the street from me replaced what? One tire. But so what I'm trying to say to you is, and plus, when this is all said, and then watering lawns, these neighbors had to water lawns before when we had all this no rain. We didn't have that problem this week or last, so, but and also, I'm wondering, I'm going to take my car in for front-end alignment when this is all said and done, because I have no idea what I'm facing, and and I like to keep my tires as long as I can. So here's what I'm asking, which you're going to smile at. I'm asking that everybody that lives in that neighborhood, that owns a home and lives there, that you waive their stormwater and sewage costs or charges for the next year. Think about that. You guys can do it, I believe. I was told you can do it. I might be wrong, but I was told you can do it. I don't want to talk anymore. I appreciate you letting me come and speak. I know you got a lot tonight. I see the crowd here, so thank you so much. And Mrs. Lindsay, I thank you so much for coming to our neighborhood more than once, and I really appreciate that, and I've told many neighbors about you coming, because they need to know this. So thank you again, everybody. Thank you.
Well, as I say, sitting up here with the five of us, you have to visit before you vote, so so you know what you're voting on, so. Okay, is there anybody else for public comment? We're good? Okay, board members, we're good? Do I have approval for change order number one from Dolly for the Mini Basin? B C C, B C seven A, seven B, seven C, seven D, eight C, and eight D sewer system improvement project? We need a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And I I think that the township and Dolly has learned their lesson. We need communication through all of this the next time around, so thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, action to approve change order number one from New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company, Inc. for the twenty twenty four Lower Paxton Township paving project. Mr. Gottschall.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, change order number one with New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company Incorporated corresponds to the annual township paving project, this being the twenty twenty four paving project. This change order before the board this evening, which has been reviewed and recommended by township engineer and staff, unfortunately does not relate to a term extension, but rather a monetary increase, this being in the amount of twenty two thousand seven hundred seventy dollars and fifty three cents. The bulk of that change order relates to a intersection realignment project that would remove a bottleneck at the intersection of T Road with Ranger and Catherine. It was kind of some, I'll say funky geometry with that intersection as it exists today. So this project's going to allow us to kind of realign that intersection a bit to reduce a bottleneck there and improve the alignment and reduce some sight distance issues. That in itself was in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. The remaining portion, nine thousand or so, relates to sewer manhole adjustments, which will be paid out of our sewer fund. So all that said, this change order increases the contract by twenty two thousand seven hundred seventy dollars and fifty three cents, and I'd be happy to help answer any questions the board may have on this project and this action item before you.
Yeah, I did see they're going to be widening it, so I think the residents will appreciate that, you know, in that area. Questions, comments from the board? Anybody from the public here? Okay, do I have a motion to approve change order number one from New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company, Inc. for the twenty twenty four Lower Paxton Township paving project?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Action to adopt an agreement with the Central Dolphin School District, establishing a community garden on the grounds of E H Phillips Elementary School. Mr. Gottschall.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, and I do see with us this evening in the in the audience, we certainly have a representative from the Central Dolphin School District as well as, I believe, the, I saw her somewhere.
She's here.
Representative from the the dedicated volunteers who had been working with the township on this project, and I'll just give a quick briefing before, maybe I turn it over to those folks if they have comments or or the board certainly, but, you know, for a number of months now, the township has been working with volunteers and the Central Dolphin School District on a joint venture with regard to the establishment of a community garden. This is something that has been brought to our attention by residents, and the board took a rather proactive step to reach out and and get some more information on that. I know the Madam Chair and I had been touring around with with district representatives to various community gardens around the the county, and we think we have a great location here in in Central Dolphin's E H Phillips Elementary School. And and so before the board this evening is a formal, an M O U with the school district to kick this thing off and allow and allow this joint venture to to be put into place, and I think we're at a good place now, so. It has been reviewed by township solicitor and and staff, and and stands prepared for board action this evening.
This is very exciting. In January, we had two residents come to us and propose about doing a community garden, and we're like, where do we put it? We just put over five million dollars in our parks. We didn't want to dig them up. So a resident just happened to be watching the meeting and contacted one of the school board members and said, hey, that we we can do this. So we've been working on this since January, and we thank So we've been working on this since January, and we thank the school district for collaborating with us. There's probably going to be fifty to fifty-four lots that will be available. It is on the E.H. Phillips School District land there, on, right off of Locust Lane. So this is exciting for us, and I know Evy is here. Andrew's not. Evy, would you like to get up and tell a little bit about it before we take the? Yeah, if you can just come to the podium, we'll need your name and your address. Yeah, you can.
Wanted to say some things.
Okay.
You'll just have to, you'll just have to put him by the microphone.
By the mic.
There you go, thanks.
So if we could just have your name and address.
I'm Evelyn Lopaddock. My address is 511 Kingston Road, Harrisburg, PA, 17112.
Resident of Lower Paxton Township.
Resident of Lower Paxton Township.
No, you're good.
All right, so I'm going to get Andrew on the line here. He wants to be included, but he couldn't make it tonight. Is there any way that you could call him from a phone up there, or?
I think that'll be easier.
Okay. Hey, so I'm at the microphone right now. Could you state who you are and where you live?
My name is Andrew Siligre. I live at 2182 Gale Drive, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania.
Okay, so they want us to give a little description of what we've been doing with the community garden, about the whole project, if you want to say a few words.
Take it off the top. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can. Yes, we can.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, just from the beginning here, I'll just give you a quick rundown. So back in January, Evelyn and I created a Facebook post, basically inquiring on the Lower Paxton Township Facebook page, the informal one, if anybody would be interested in having a community garden. Overnight, there were hundreds of people, so we set up another page to try to get the ball rolling. We got in contact with the township. We've been collaborating with the township on how to design it, how to build it. I have experience managing community gardens in the past. Long story short, I guess we're looking to develop the site at the E.H. Phillips Elementary School. We've got a couple different garden plan ideas that we can work off of if that's helpful. In order to help secure funding for it, because I know it's kind of a, it's a little bit expensive and it's not really on the budget yet, Evelyn and I put together a grant. We co, we had the township to get co-applicant on the grant, but we're trying to get the gaming grant from Dauphin County. Today, we submitted that Dauphin, that gaming grant. I think we requested thirty-six thousand, eight hundred. It should cover a fence, a shed, a workshop area, some tools, and I think like sort of this covered, a covered area to do the workshops. We're hoping to have educational programs for people in the community. A lot of people don't know how to garden. A lot of people have never gardened before, so we're hoping to be able to get that up and rolling. Over the winter, we can show people how to get plants ready. We've sort of created a, I guess, I guess a citizens group called Cultivating Roots Advocacy, where we're just, that's kind of the label for this project to help work on the gardens. We're trying our best to unburden the township from the difficult parts, I guess, and coordinate volunteers, so there's not as much of a burden on them day to day, and, you know, whatever we can do to help.
Yeah, that pretty much sums it up.
Great, Andrew, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
If you have any other questions, I'm here, happy to answer.
Any other questions?
I think we're all pretty good. It's been very explanatory. It's been a long haul, so we're hoping by March fifteenth, the first seed will go in the ground.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. And thank you for coming, Evy.
Yeah, thank you.
Is Eric here?
Yeah, he's over there.
Oh, how did I miss you? Name and your address, please, sir, and your title.
Eric Epstein, Lower Paxton Township, forty-one hundred Hillsdale Road. I am a part of the executive committee for the school district and the chairman of finance. I'd also want to point out that you didn't have a tax increase this year, so hopefully you'll remember that next year in the event that doesn't occur. It can be a little dicey. So E.H. Phillips is an interesting location, and I just would comment on a couple of things. We can't have parking at the school, so it'll be at Pennswood. And then E.H. Phillips will undergo next summer, those of you who follow the district may recognize that we have five schools without air conditioning. E.H. Phillips is going to get air conditioning next year, as is, I think, Mountain View. So I did travel with Mr. Guttshall, Mrs. Lindsay. I think we hit four gardens, which was four more than I really wanted to see. We went to Elmerton, Steleton, Millersburg, and then over to Mechanicsburg. So we're excited about the venture. We're going to put it on our agenda next week. I have an agenda.
Perfect.
Meeting tomorrow. As an aside, is that Sam Miller?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I thank you for the briefing the other day. I don't know if you got my message?
I did, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, as an aside, and the township probably knows, the district has a reverse tax policy that we're implementing to try and recover revenue from underpaying corporate entities. So I didn't realize, had the experience, I think, Central York or York previous to this, so West Hanover, Lower Paxton, Swatara are all on board for that. I guess the only other thing I would point out is that I am so grateful that we're not going to have to do the gardening aspect, because my only gardening experience is at the waste market in the produce section, and I think your volunteers have been super. So we're looking forward to it, and I think we can get it going by next spring. It seems like we're there, and our building and grounds folks are available if you need any assistance.
Great, and thank you again for collaborating with us. We really appreciate it. It's exciting, exciting for the community, so.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Okay, do I have a motion to adopt an agreement with the Central Dauphin School District establishing a community guarding on the grounds of the E.H. Phillips Elementary School? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Subdivision and land development, action to adopt ordinance 2024-06, amending the township zoning map to accept the rezoning of land along Parkway East from agricultural residential to open space development overlay. I will be turning this over to Teresa Davis as choir. Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now is the time and place for the hearing regarding the action to adopt ordinance 24-06, amending the township zoning map to accept the rezoning of land along Parkway East from agricultural residential to open space development overlay. The public notice advertising the proposed ordinance was posted in the legal ag column of The Sun on September fifth and September twelfth of 2024. The property of the public notice was posted on August twenty-ninth, 2024. The ordinance was advertised appropriately, and I would like to make that part of the record, and I request the court reporter to do so. This was also reviewed by the Township Planning Commission and the Dauphin County Planning Commission. I will now ask Nick Garrett, please excuse the pronunciation, the planning officer, to provide a brief introduction regarding the ordinance.
Thank you. Ordinance 24-06 amends Chapter 203 of the zoning ordinance, Section 303A, to modify the Lower Paxton Township zoning map to rezone land from the AR Agricultural Residential District to the Open Space Development Overlay District. Ordinance 24-06 amends the zoning map to rezone the Agricultural Residential to the Open Space Development Overlay District for the parcel known as Dauphin County Tax Parcel Number 35003014, which has a total area of one hundred and eighty and point two seven acres. The application for amendment to the zoning ordinance was sent to Lower Paxton and Dauphin County Planning Commissions for review on July second, 2024. The Dauphin County Planning Commission recommended approval of the map amendment at the August fifth, 2024 meeting. The proposed zap zoning map amendment was not recommended for approval by the Lower Paxton Township Planning Commission at the September fourth, 2024 meeting. And with that, board members, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have regarding the proposed map amendment in this property.
Nick, since we haven't been privy to the minutes of that meeting, what was their main reason for denying it?
The reasoning behind the planning commission denying the plan is that they had a belief that that many homes could not be constructed in that, on that property, simply based off of issues related to perks and probes for septic, things of that nature. Now, I may just give you some background on a zoning map amendment. The zoning map amendment that becomes before you tonight, same as went before the planning commission, is based merely on density. Do you agree with the density, or do you not agree with the density? The applicant has met their burden, and township, myself, the zoning officer, and HRG reviewed the plan, and the parcels they show on that plan for their yield plan is, we believe, is the amount that's acceptable under the zoning district. Whether or not they could all be truly be developable building lots is not something that we are able to dive into at this stage. That would happen at land development if it were to get that far. But with the testimony by the public and from the planning commission's knowledge of that area, they had reason to believe that this may not be possible.
Nick, I have a question. In all the papers that we received here on our packet, it doesn't tell you who the developer is. Are you allowed to tell us who the developer is?
Yeah, Sean Delaney from Stevenson Lee Land Use Council for the owner of the property. It's the Ann Bonnetts estate is the owner of the property. That's who our client is. We are not at the development phase yet. We're just going through this exercise with the township's overlay district provisions as a precursor to going through the land development process.
Okay, I have another question. The map that was in our packet, it looks like the road is going over top of the pond. See the purple there and see the pond?
I believe that's the township line. The road goes to the north and east of the pond, north being planned left right now as you're looking at it.
So part of the pond is in West Hanover and the other part's in Lower Paxton?
Correct.
Okay, so when I was back there, there's a road that says no trespassing. Is that a private road, or is that a township road in West Hanover?
That is a private road at that point, at that intersection, that serves as the driveway for the Bonnetts homestead. The plan has been designed so that that private drive is not used as access to the proposed development.
Okay, I just, I just have a lot of questions here I wanted to ask. So it looks like, I know it's, you know, it's not a land development, but I just had a question. Looks like there's conservation district back there. Will there be building on the conservation district?
No.
Okay.
That's in the West Hanover Township side. Yeah, if you, basically, there's a small piece that is in there residential conservation district, so, but we are not proposing any development there.
Okay, have you notified West Hanover Township on this plan?
We have talked to them about the road access issue, yes, but we haven't told them that we're filing a land development plan because that's premature.
Okay, so they didn't need to be notified that you were coming before us this evening?
No.
Okay. I also noticed the entryway on, when I was back there at Parkway East is right across from sixty-two ten, and that's also at a very, very bad curve back there also. So I think that's going to be a site issue, you know, with that many, I know we're not at the land development, but I'm just saying, with that many houses that are going to be built back there.
Agreed, yeah, understood.
Okay, okay, and then the property portion lies within a hundred-year floodplain?
Yes.
So there is a lot of wetlands back there also?
The lower ground, yes, and that's all, that is all shown on the yield.
Right, okay, all right.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so Nick, so the planning commission voted not to recommend, and like I said, we don't have the minutes. Staff says you don't necessarily agree with their analysis.
No, but Supervisor Judd, staff's responsibility in this process is to ensure that the process is done correctly. We just ensure that the process is done throughout planning commission and board of supervisors, whether it's a recommendation for approval or condition of approval. I give no recommendation on whether or not I agree with the plan in itself. I merely agree that the density that is shown on the plan with the amount of parcels is accurate.
You're saying that it meets the criteria for that rezoning?
It meets, it meets the criteria for the, for the rezoning for an open space.
Yeah, like you're just saying they were able to fit the appropriate amount of houses in that space. It's not a house extra or whatever, right?
That's correct, because at this stage, you have to show the streets, you have to show the lots accurately.
Gotcha.
Size and wetlands, but it doesn't have to be to the engineering detail that's required under land development.
Sure, sure. So they could, I mean, put in less lots than what's on here, but this is, they're going for as dense as they can get it.
So the difficulty is that, yes, you, they could put less lots in, but once you approve an open space development, which is what Dauphin County always puts in their memo, is that anything can be approved, once it's approved, you wouldn't be able to restrict the amount of units once an open space development is approved.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So the open space development allows how many houses?
Currently, it allows for seventy-eight lots within this development, within, on the property, Ture and West Hanover. With the yield plan, they're showing sixty-three lots.
Just to make that clear, so we have, what you're showing here is the byright development under the current zoning in the AR District, which is one unit per every acre and a half. And so obviously you have to net out wetlands, roads, and things like that, but, so this is the layout that our engineer prepared, showing what you could do today with no rezoning. And at this, the yield is seventy-four units. So in theory, you could.
You said seventy-four, he said seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight units.
Okay.
In theory, one and a half acre lots, you could put about a hundred and seven on here, but in reality, you can't. Now, under the open space overlay district guidelines, because this property isn't served by public water or public sewer, you're allowed a minimum lot size of one acre. But you have to set aside a minimum of forty percent of the parcel as open space, and at least one of, one of those parcels, the open space parcels, has to be large enough to constitute at least fifty percent of the required open space. So when we went through basically the massing analysis under the overlay, there are some lots that are less than an acre and a half, but there's some that are three acres based on the realities of the property. And so under the, sort of counterintuitively, under the overlay guidelines, we end up with sixty-three units. So we're actually are less units in the open space overlay district as opposed to what you could do by right. This allows us to preserve the mountainside and concentrate the development in the lower ground. Now, this is consistent with the goals of the open space overlay district. It's to promote flexibility in development, protect environmentally sensitive areas, which again, the whole northern third of the property is hillside. To avoid severe erosion and increased flow rates that could occur from building on steeper slopes, it's to provide recreation areas. So you've got the open space, forty percent minimum, that is providing a recreation area for the residents. It's to steer development to suitable areas. If you look at the comprehensive plan, the AR District is one area where the plan says utilization of the open space overlay district is appropriate as a way to guide property development in the township. Trying to avoid construction on steep slopes, that's a goal. Conserve forested areas and wildlife habitat, and to allow the reasonable use of land. So again, it is kind of counterintuitive, but by granting the request to include this parcel in the overlay district, you're actually reducing the number of units that could be built. Now, the prime reason.
From seventy-eight to sixty-three?
Correct, correct. So one of, well, the main reason, the only reason really that the zoning officer alluded to, the planning commission recommending a denial, was based on the fact that they thought that it'd be impossible for a one-acre lot. thought that it'd be impossible for a one acre lot to adequately perk and probe, that the results of the development, you know, wouldn't be feasible. The reality is, the size of lot, while it may be a one acre minimum, that will be driven by the results of the perk and probe studies. So if there's a lot on our overlay district design that says it's 1.18 acres and the soil doesn't support an on lot system at that size, that lot's going to have to get bigger. But that's part of the land development process. All that's going to do is reduce the number of units that we can have. But again, it's premature to go through perks and probes for an entire site when we don't even know what the zoning is and that's, that's, that's why we're here.
Any further questions or comments from the board?
So, Mr. Garrett, the Planning Commission, they, they understood that there would be a reduction from 78 units down to 63 and they still denied it?
That is correct.
So there, there's still some concern other than the number of units?
If there's no more questions from the board, I can move on to public comment. You could please raise your hand if you're interested in commenting publicly. I'll start in the back on the left, the man with the glasses.
Thank you. My name's Jake Salzer. I live at 937 Pheasant.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
That's what I was trying to do. 937 Pheasant, Jake Salzer.
Just an announcement to shout. I'm going to try and get all of your names correct for the record, so if I raise my hand, please.
Yes, S-U-L-Z-E-R. Yes, thank you. I have a USB with some photographs I'd like to show. Could I plug it in here and, thank you? Would you show it? I'd like to thank the supervisors for taking public comment tonight. This is really important to us and we really appreciate you listening in. The first thing I'd like to do, if you'd be all right with it, is provide you with a copy of a petition us neighbors have put together. I have that copy here. Do you want me to wait till the end or would you like to read it now?
I would say, go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, all right, no problem. The petition's been signed by 112 of us. We limited it to people who live on these streets. If you look at it, there's probably 37 to 40 houses on Parkway East, another 20-some on Compton and Pheasant. So if you put together the math, pretty much everyone here is opposed to this. We didn't go out on 22 or send it out on Facebook and say, anyone, please sign. The reason we're opposed to it when you read our petition is, it bakes down to this. This Bonnetts property is beautiful. It is a real, oh, sorry, I'm trying to get to the keyboard. It's a, it's a real gem in this area. It's full of natural resources, 180 acres. It's the most beautiful property around here, it really is. And while we prefer no development, we, we're not unrealistic. We're not going to stand up here and shout at you and say, stop this now. We understand that an owner has a right to do within the ordinance limits to develop it, provided it doesn't damage us. And this proposed yield plan would be detrimental with flooding, wetland damage, unsafe traffic. And yes, generally, open space is probably a newer, better way of doing things, but on this particular property, given its uniqueness at the headwaters of the Beaver Creek and giving this yield plan, it's not a good idea. I've sat and listened to the developer and discussed and sell this idea of 74 houses or 78 houses, or if you give us this, we'll give you 63. I represent to you, that's not an accurate analogy and that's why the planning commission said no. I watched Mr. Lighty and the other members who denied it sit up there and say, they don't believe 78 is accurate. The attorney just said, well, when you don't perk and probe, you go to bigger lots. Yes, those commissioner members were saying, ultimately, if we, if we keep this agricultural residential, what will have to happen, it'll be bigger lots, so less amount of houses, less amount of impact in this very sensitive area. That's why they denied it. So I have that petition for you then, when you're able to, but I'll go through our sort of thoughts now. Again, those are the key points that I just went through. Property is a treasure, but this isn't the way to do it. I wanted to give you a picture of this property because I think a picture is very telling. If you look around this, this is not a development spot. This is a beautiful countryside. Everyone here who lives there, we love it because we're not really like the white picket fence and sidewalk people. We're the, we like space people. And you see it, it's 180 acres, it's huge. It's surrounded by farmland on the east. I've, I've positioned the property so the north is the top of the slide, the south is the bottom, right? So you have a huge farm to the right, you have nothing but open land to the north on the mountain, and on the side you see large lots with big houses. You don't see a cluster of 60 houses. When you look at their presentation and they say, this is, we're honoring what you guys want with open space, the ordinance says they have to set aside land clearly suitable for active or passive recreation. I've put in a copy of your picture from the comprehensive plan of what green, open space looks like, right? Nice field, kids can play soccer, you can set down a picnic blanket. Narrow and unusable lands don't count, right? The greens should be centered, so you have the houses all focusing on it, right? This is the proposal. If you zoom in on it, sections D, I'm sorry, B, C, and D, all they are, they're open space, it's corridors around the wetland. Kids aren't going to play there. Dogs aren't going to be walked there. They, it's, it's really hard for me not to question, hey, guys, did you just take the unusable stuff and say, hey, we're going to cram houses in everywhere else? If you look and zoom out, from the Parkway, which is on the bottom, over to Compton, which is on the top, you have house, street, house, street, house, house, street, house, street, house. There's no centrally located green area. The big lot is Lot A. That is the side of Blue Mountain. It's 790 feet in elevation at the top, down to about five something where the houses start. So I'm not an engineer, I can't tell you the slope grade. What I can tell you, I can tell you that I've hunted over there on the Russell property on the farm, you better be in really good shape. The only recreation you're getting is really in shape hikers. You're not walking your dog up there. It's completely wooded and it's rocky. So I think it's fair for you to question this developer. Hey, we like open space. Are you meeting that? Because this doesn't look like usable green space to us or open space to us. I raised this to show you that we're not these crazy neighbors who are just saying, oh, not in my backyard, not in my backyard. Tri-County Planning, Regional Planning Commission puts out a study, they've been studying it for decades on density in the area. This property falls within the rural reserve area, which would have one house to every six acres. Their current showing, one house every two and a half. So I think you need to start looking, as you look in this and say, guys, are you going to rip out some of these houses and put in green space and drop 60 to 20 or 30? Or are you gonna, or are you just trying to get the most so you can run out and get the most money out of this property? We have flooding concerns and it's the same concerns that Lower Paxton has in its comprehensive plan. This is Beaver Creek, it's a major finding by Lower Paxton, saying this is the largest area flood prone lands. If you look at the Dolphin County watershed map and you zoom in, now I've rudimentally, rudimentaryly drawl, drew, sorry, this property, I outlined it in black. So the north is at the top of the slide, the south, so that's the property outlined. What you're over top of is the headwater of Beaver Creek. The highest elevation in Lower Paxton, Beaver Creek, biggest flooding problem that we have, this, everything's downwind from this, everything's downhill from this. So if you mess up here, it's a catastrophic problem. That's why we're concerned. Again, going to an aerial view of the map, north again is at the top of the slide, south is at the bottom. Property under their own map is steep, it goes from 790 feet in elevation to 433 at the southeast corner. That low point that I've marked there with a blue arrow, right? It's the lowest spot. That's the lowest spot when it rains. And I'm not, I promise you, I'm not cherry picking pictures. You can ask the Russells who live back there, how many times do we have to run into a problem where you can't get home? That, that culvert that's under several feet of water in that fixture, picture was redone by Lower Paxton in 2015. And I'm not throwing shots at you guys, I'm appreciative that you tried to fix it, but sometimes mother nature is just a bear and you're not going to out engineer it. Look to the right of here, that's where houses are going to go. On the right side of that high water sign are lots. And kicking the can down the road and saying, oh, well, just give me the density and I'll fix it later, I don't think that's the right way to go. I think you consider all this when you sent density. Again, just to prove I wasn't lying, on your website, culvert replacement in 2015, it was a huge project. My recollection was a couple, it was a hun, at least 100 feet of the road was dug up, closed for days, culvert put in. The environmental impact, this is what really concerns me. We all love nature out there, I think we all love it and that's why we live out there. This is the hydraulic soil map from Dolphin County. They, you can see through the bottom, south part of this property, that's, that's open space, B, C, and D, right along the wetlands. It's interconnected. I've marked on there, because I've lived there my whole life, where ponds are around the whole area. So you have the Bonnetts Pond is a red dot, to the south you have the Baker Pond, the Russells, the Wests, the other Russells, the Sminks, myself, Evanoff, and I actually forgot one because Crumb has it. Trust me when I say, they're all interconnected. When they log on this mountain, they're all ruined. Someone puts in algae control in one pond, just pond, 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 out Beaver Creek. They are interconnected and these are gems. This is an aerial map of them, they're all in a closed spot. You don't have this anymore. And when I'm out and about in Lower Paxton, someone hears where I live, they go, oh, I learned to fish there when I was growing up. During COVID, my wife and I had an open invitation, if your kids are penned in, bring them out and learn to fish. These are beautiful spots and I am just so afraid of messing these up because once that cat's out of the bag, it's done. Again, I think a lot of my neighbors will speak on this about traffic safety. These are backcountry roads. This isn't a development you're putting in on Linglestown Road. This is a development at the end of two long, winding, narrow roads, frequent crashes. Parkway East has 37 homes on it, Compton and Fox Hill have 20. So if you give them 60, you're, you've just doubled, right? This is a picture of Parkway East. I've marked it in green, up the side of the mountain. Yeah, I've marked all the homes. The orange is where this proposed development would come in, at the 90-degree turn, right? That Chair Lindsay pointed out. This is pictures of that turn as you travel north to it. You come up to a blind hill. As you approach it, there's a sharp turn to the left, just to the right is your entrance where 60 homes are coming out. In reverse, traveling south, coming down a hill, sharp turn to the right, over there to the left would be the entrance. That's where 60 homes coming out every morning on a, on a road that already has a lot of problems and I'll let my neighbors speak to that. That's where, that's, we're just inviting a real bad problem and I think that needs to be taken into consideration when you sent that city. Chair Lindsay, you had discussed the back road. My entire life, it's been a driveway. Originally, they were going to widen that in their proposal, now their proposal is they will build a whole new road just to the left of this driveway. Double wide road for them to come through. That road is zone conservation in West Hanover. I tried to put a sidewalk in my house and zone conservation. I, you wouldn't believe what I had to go to, but apparently you can build a two-lane road through it now and it's no problem. Right over top Beaver Creek, right next to the pond. And when I explain this to my neighbors, to my counterparts in the Parkway, when we're talking about, hey, we're setting density here, I say to them, guys, I don't know if that can happen. If it doesn't, all this is going out one way. So you won't even have two ways if you don't get approval through there. And I, trust me, everyone in West Hanover, we don't want that. I really thank you. I appreciate you not cutting me off and letting me ramble on. I said it before, I hope we're doing it right. I hope ultimately that open space isn't the way to go, right? And I'm right and it's going to lead to less houses because my son has to live there too. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Salzer. Your comments are noted. I believe there is a gentleman sitting close to Mr. Salzer who raised his hand as well.
Thank you. My name is Chris Semancik. I live at 6606 Parkway East, also lucky enough to own property on, on the West Hanover side off of Pheasant. So my property over there is two properties away from this. And I think first and foremost, the kind of how this all transpired was initially when we had the first meeting with the board or with the Planning Commission, that ended on basically the, the task that they need to, to reach out to West Hanover and figure out if they can have this access on the West Hanover side. We went to the West Hanover meeting and spoke with them, they had not heard about it at all. So as of the last meeting they had, they were not aware of this. We brought it to their attention. So that is a major issue because like Jake said, there's only 30-some houses on Parkway. So if we're adding 60-plus houses and they all need to eventually come out on the Parkway because West Hanover won't grant permission, that's a huge problem. And I think that with West Hanover, the whole West Hanover side is conservation. And with that being our neighbors, if we had land that was conservation, we would not want them to put a high-density development right next to ours. So I think that we should be considerate of the fact that we're doing that to them. So this is, it's, zone is conservation for a reason. Manada Conservancy is to the north of this. That whole mountaintop ridge is all conservation and it's that way for a reason. There's endangered species that live up there, the allegheny wood rat, very important, the allegheny wood rat. And just the, the traffic, I mean, that's, that's pretty much probably our major concerns. And, and like Jake said, our kids live here and they will grow up here and it's, it's a huge concern. Traffic is a problem, sightlines are an issue, wildlife, yeah, look out for the wood rat. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. If you could, please raise your hands once again if you're looking to comment. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Linda Lucas, L-U-C-A-S. I live at, sorry, I live at 6707 Parkway East. So I'm, I'm down from where this road would, would come out at, I'm, I'm close to where the Compton, where Compton comes across the Parkway East. I wanted to first address your question, Madam Chair, about why the, in my opinion, and why the Planning Commission denied this. I, I believe that the Planning Commission saw the ruse that is, is actually happening here. If they really thought that they could build and use the agriculture, if we stay with the agricultural zoning, and we know there's going to, at some point, be a development here. What we're trying to do is to make it reasonable for the properties in the area and as has already been presented, larger lots. They also made the decision because of one and a half acre versus one acre for septic systems. Once that zoning is changed, they don't necessarily have to keep the plan that they have. That hasn't been presented or approved. Once you change the zoning, we're in a slippery slope here. If they really could build more houses, zoning is agriculture, agricultural, why do you think they want to change it? They want to change it because they want to do more. I also was, I wanted to question, in other conversations, I thought we were working with Triple Crown Corporation. Maybe we're not any longer, but that's, that was who was mentioned in the beginning. So I- So I just wanted to bring that up. And I, living on Parkway East, I'm right before the first bend, and the speed of traffic, I mean, people run the stop sign at the bottom, my husband's mowing, you know, doing weed whacking along the side, I mean, cars just zoom by him, and we have a speed limit of 25 mile an hour. I ask you to consider that, as also was presented, what if West Hanover Township doesn't let them come out on that side? We're going to have, okay, 60 homes, roughly, we'll say, times two cars, you've got 100 and more, 120 more cars on our road and at that sharp turn. It's just, it's not safe, it's not practical, and I ask you really, truly to consider, why would you, if you really could do what you say you could do with agricultural, why do you want to change the zoning? Let's leave it the way it is and hope for the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lucas. Yes, sir.
My name is Doug Beck. I live at 6210 Parkway East. If West Hanover denies that road, there will be 120 cars a day, service vehicles, delivery trucks, coming out at my driveway all times of the day and night. Planning Commission denied this, not only for all of the things that Jake said, but the safety of the individuals that use that road. We have hikers, we have bikers, we have people that walk their dogs, we have sports car enthusiasts that fly up and down the road. But I think what aggravates me the most about being here tonight is the fact that these guys spit in the face of the planning commission. The planning commission said no, for all the reasons we're here, and it insults all the people that are in this room. And that just shows the audacity and arrogance of the people we're dealing with. And that insults me, as well as all of these people. And I really hope that you guys will consider the planning commission, they're your subcommittee, they're the guys that give you the reason for yes or no's on all these projects. If they said no, they had a reason to say no. And I hope you appreciate that, and you'll consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Just Seacrest. I live at 6908 Fox Hill Road. So with the water issues and concerns, my husband was a wildlife biologist for Fort Indian Town Gap, and he has a lot of information, a lot of expertise in these areas, and he was not able to make it tonight, because he's with our son. So I am here on his behalf to try to explain the situation. Are any of you familiar with atrazine? Pre-emergent herbicide? Do any of you treat your lawn?
I know you don't eat it.
Yeah. So atrazine is a pre-emergent used by companies, chemical companies, lawn care companies like TruGreen. It's one of a plethora of chemicals that go into their sprays. Windslet development, most of the houses in windslet development, I know you guys are familiar with that, most of the houses in there use TruGreen. We have the property at 6908 Fox Hill Road, we also have a property at the bottom of windslet development, and we have a well. Our well water is unpotable because of all the chemicals that are used on the lawns in windslet development, like atrazine. We have to get a whole house filtration system there, I cannot give my son a bath in our water, because atrazine and other chemicals, other pre-emergents like that, at a quarter of the legal dosage that the EPA regulates, will change the sex of amphibians and allow male frogs to start laying eggs. So if you're putting a development like this, that is going to be putting chemicals on their lawns at the headwater of Beaver Creek, those chemicals are going to travel through all of these ponds, and all of the amphibians, and all of the well systems are going to have these chemicals and potentially start to be unpotable because of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else, I think I saw one more hand over on this side.
Hi, everybody. My name is Wilma Winter. It's six, at winter, just like Wilma, W-I-L-M-A, winter, like season. I live at 6021 Parkway East. I have spent most of my 71-year-old life at that address. So I have seen many, many changes come and go through the Parkway, Blue Mountain Parkway, as well as Parkway East. When I started grade school, Parkway East was still a dirt road. We walked to the top of Blue Mountain Parkway, that's where we got our school bus. So I've seen a lot of changes. I'm not saying go back to dirt roads, not saying that at all, okay? But I'm saying I have seen some changes come through our communities that are not very beneficial to the people who already live there, they are beneficial to the developers and the people who are selling the parcels of land. I appreciate that these people are certainly able to do what they want to with their property within the restrictions of the law, okay? I also see very potential problems, traffic being a huge problem, water runoff and water in general being a huge problem. If the water is going to be polluted, which we have a well on our farm, it's still the same hand-dug well that was there when this farm was established back in the 1800s, okay? It makes the water so you can't utilize it. So what are you doing? You're bringing city water in. The other thing is, if these wells go dry, then again, you still have to bring water in. If the septic systems fail to function properly, and at some point, they probably will, now you're going to contaminate the other people in the neighborhood, their wells. And so because we don't have access there for these people to hook up to sewer and to city water, it's creating a whole bunch of problems we don't need to create. I'm very firmly in the belief it should stay A1 agriculture, residential, and let them build bigger lots. We're not saying don't build, because it's going to happen, it's eventually going to happen. But I don't think they can build 78 or 74 houses if it's zoned agriculture still. They're just not going to perk and probe all of them. So this is a, this for them is a really good way, and he's being a great lawyer by doing this for his client, but this is a real easy way for them to get their money and get out of Dodge, okay? It's pretty much that simple. I knew Mr. Bonnetts, I knew the gentleman that owned the property before him, Mr. Compton, who used to take me for rides on his horse as a little girl. So I've got a big history in this area, I understand it. The wildlife is rampant back there, so leave them have a place where they can be rampant, okay? Because any day now, Parkway East, you're going to start seeing dead deer because the rut's about to come on, okay? It's just make them be responsible about it. Remember, the people that are already living there also have rights and responsibilities for the properties they are on. And don't make us responsible for them hurrying the process along, putting in homes that are not adequately cared for as far as sewer and water, and then it's our problem, and you have issues like the Mountain View Acres, where the runoff is horrendous, okay? So that's all. Just keep in mind that it's for the betterment of our whole community, our whole township, that we have voted you guys into office, ladies also, I mean that as a general term, and that it's not just for the benefit of one person, or one family, or one beneficiary. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Beck, you may make a second comment, as long as it's not repetitive of your original comment.
It's not at all. I just had two questions. If the traffic study that is part of land development recommends improvements to Parkway East, does the developer pay for that, or does the township pay for that? Three years from now, when PenDOT tells us we need a roundabout at the St. Thomas Church in 39, because of all the traffic, who pays for that? The township or the developer? He's gone. Just a question.
That's a state road. You're talking about a state road where the roundabout went in.
Yeah, but at the end of Parkway East where the church is, now we have all this traffic that's coming from this new development, and three years from now, we have nothing but traffic jams, crashes, and PenDOT recommends a roundabout, who pays for that three years from now?
Thank you. Please raise your hands again if you're looking to comment. Yes, sir?
My name is Bob Thomas, 6600 Parkway East in the township. My topic tonight are relative to the proposed rezoning, specific things. And number one, the impact of smaller lot sizes on the long-term effectiveness of onsite utilities is one of my concerns. I've asked township staff, when the last time was you've been presented with a residential subdivision with total onsite utilities? Does anyone recall? I was told never, I know the answer isn't never, but I don't think it's in this century. So I think we're in a land development process that is not your normal process. There's no public utilities here. So I think caution is the word of the day, as far as I'm concerned. Now, the proposed rezoning, and I'm not an engineer, I'm just working with what was made publicly available, reduces the minimum lot size from roughly 65,000 square feet, acre and a half, to 43,000 square feet, about an acre. That's a 33% reduction in the lot size for a development that has onsite utilities, okay? There has been no scientific or environmental engineering data provided, I understand they don't have to at this point, but I think this is an issue of trying to get the genie back in the bottle. Once you approve the lower lot sizes, I think we're stuck with it. There's been no data that I've seen that says smaller lots are better for onsite utilities. Intuition is bigger lots are better for onsite utilities. So I've not seen anything that justifies shrinking the lot size down to an acre, all right? What happens, and the township dealt with this many years ago, decades ago, you know, high-density onsite utilities leads to contaminated wells. That's where I don't want to see us going. Our neighbors in West Hanover have dealt with this recently, they have had two neighborhoods, Holiday Park and Hox Manor, where the township had to run public sewer because DEP forced them to do it, because of contaminated wells and malfunctioning sewer systems. Both of those developments, one's 1.5 miles from this, one is exactly one mile from this, on the exact same geological terrain, okay? So contamination has been happening. It's not in our township, but for the sake of an arbitrary line that says there's a boundary between West Hanover and Lower Paxton, it's in the same geographic area. This issue has happened. And West Hanover has spent millions of dollars to deal with it because they were forced to. That's where I don't want to see us end up. My second concern is the stormwater runoff. It's been mentioned, there's a, they call it, some refer to it as a 100-year flood plane. In the National Flood Insurance Program, it's referred to as a Zone A. That is the highest risk of flood rating in the National Flood Insurance Program. Front Street in Harrisburg City is Zone A. We have Zone A cutting completely across the bottom section of this property from east to west, okay? That should tell you, that at least tells me, there is currently a ton of runoff focusing on this property, okay? I was surprised to see that we had a Zone A at the foot of the mountain. But we have it, it's there. So there's already a lot of runoff coming in. So this proposed rezoning, again, as I'm understanding it, and we've talked about the number of units under the yield plan and all that, my own assessment is, from about the road there in the middle, the YVS in the middle there, they're taking the mountain out of play. Under the yield plan, from that road south, their yield plan had 45 lots. Under their proposed rezoning plan, where the mountain stays mountain, now we have 63 lots. So they have in fact increased the density, and it only makes sense. You shrunk the lot size requirement, they're going to put more lots in there. So there are more lots on their plan, whether it plays out with perks and probes, I don't know. But conceptually, they've increased the density from that S going south by 40%. Well, by definition, that's got to be a 40% increase in the lot surface area, impermeable surface area. You've added 40% more lots. So we're making property, we're adding more impermeable area, driveways, the house, the footprint of the house, sidewalks. We're adding that in an area that's got a Zone A flood risk. Again, it seems like the step in the wrong direction. So, and I know it would happen later in land development, I am really curious to see how they're going to out-engineer Mother Nature. Because Mother Nature has already dictated that this property is a high runoff property. So I'm curious to see how they're going to achieve this reduction in runoff that was supposed to happen. So those are my comments, I'm obviously not in favor of approving it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe I saw a hand behind Mr. Thomas. I'm sorry, the podium is blocking, yeah.
William Miller, 4311 Crestview. I don't live out that way, I have friends out that way. In my past life, you know, the biologist, the young lady here, that's what I did for, I taught for almost 40 years, about every science there was. I helped people in this township with their wells and other things, people know that I do that. I won't help anybody, though, that doesn't get their water assayed. There's coliform bacteria everywhere, we've just about polluted every well we have, there's not a home I go in that doesn't have a UV light. The bacteria, they're harmful for kids, they don't have their immune systems fully yet to, at age of one to two years. Immunosuppressed people, as we get older, we're all going to have that problem too. And with not just the pre-emergents, but with the insecticized, pesticides, herbicide, everybody wants their tree sprayed, everybody, and you can smell it, everybody wants their yard treated. And it's all going to roll downhill, and again, it's established that this is a big wetland, it flows. And this stuff will simply accumulate. I mean, if there were 10-acre parcels, you know, a lot less. I think there's another way to do this, and everyone's correct, it's going to happen, no matter what. But I don't think the footprint is going to be anywhere near the size it is right now. And there's a lot of people with a lot of money, and they'll pay for a nice, big parcel, it could probably be the most exclusive place around here to live. But the way it's going right now, I mean, I just don't think, the pollution aspect is a tough one for me, and I've been out there, and I've seen, I was out there with all that water on the road, I know the township put a bundle of money in that, and I believe they actually did it a second time, if memory serves me correct. And again, it's just going to get worse, you know? The impervious surface is true, even stone's impervious surface. So where's all this going to go? Right now, there's an absorptive surface there, which I didn't know it was a Zone A, but it's really not that absorptive. So I think this is going to take a big, hard look to try to, if they want to try to get this off the ground. But I think the water is the most valuable resource that's out there, and I can't see it doing anything but getting worse with any kind of development there at this juncture. But the water quality is of paramount importance to me, and I just wanted to, you know, tie all that together at the end here. It'd be a critical thought in my mind that we damage something like that. And then who's going to pay for it? Like I say, who pays for all that? Who brings in the infrastructure? Who fixes all this later? Oh, we have a problem, this is terrible. But you know, what, we're going to get a grant, or, you know? This is a great township, they try to fix everything, but this would be a big fix, it really would be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Carol. I'm a resident in the township. I don't live in that area, I'm a township resident, though. And I've come here before and spoke about these zoning issues. It just seems to me that every time a developer comes in here and wants to change the zoning to jam more housing in, we seem to be wanting to accommodate them. So I did a little research on the township, and it's like, we are the most populated municipality in this county, and the 17th most populated municipality in the Commonwealth. You could correct me if I'm You could correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that is what my research showed me. So then I called the school district to say, well, how is our school district? And I'm happy to hear that there's some representatives from the district tonight because they weren't exactly cooperative when I, I mean, they weren't uncooperative. Oh, well, go to the webpage of enrollment. Okay, we did that together. And there were like two spreadsheets there. I've worked with spreadsheets my entire life. And the 2324 spreadsheet was not set up the same as this year's spreadsheet, so I was left with two different numbers. But it appeared that from last year to this year, we have had an increase of over 1,500 students. If I'm, maybe a district employee can correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, you could say I'm wrong if I'm wrong.
We're at about 12,800. You know, and it also depends. Do we use students? Do we have students at placement facilities?
Right, it has all the, right. But there's still students in our district, correct? Well, it doesn't matter where they are.
Can we just have to ask you guys in the temporary chair? If we can, A, can't have these, and then B, if we can try to stick to the-
Okay. I'm talking about our township.
I understand.
Is that okay?
I understand, but we're getting a little deep on a side issue, and I just want to respect the people here and keep it on the issue at hand. I'm asking.
Thank you. Yep, yep. He can make public comment later if he decides to.
Okay, sure. Sure. Okay. All right. So then last month, I was at a rain barrel meeting here, and DEP was telling us, you know, there was a grant. And us residents were asking to be good stewards of the stormwater and to, you know, set up our rain barrels. And I got one, and to make rain gardens and all these different things, things that we can do to mitigate stormwater runoff. And yet again, though, we're in here talking about making more dense building, you know, houses more densely built than more spread out. And it's like, you're asking our residents to do that, which is great. I mean, I participated. I got a rain barrel. I'm going to hook it up, you know, whatever. And I live in a rather more densely populated portion of the township, but I don't understand why every time there's some green area available that we would want to keep putting in more, not less, housing. Like, why can't we just keep the green parts green? I understand people can sell their farm, but why do we have to change the zoning? Like, I already had to fight to have the zoning not changed where I live in the specific area. And I, okay, I won't say anything else. You know, I'll just come to another meeting and address the other things. But I did just want to say, when they talked about having to put sewer projects in, you know, because people have wells out there, then, you know, would that be the next contract Dolly gets? Because you're talking, I'm listening to all these, I watch these things on YouTube. It's been nothing but a nightmare with these Dolly's contracts. And Mr. Gutshahl said, well, it's good to know for the next contract, the next contract? They can't even meet the obligations of current contracts.
And if we could keep the comment to the current-
Okay, sorry. Sorry. Done.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir. In the back.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Grimm. I live at 6903 Fox Hill. I would just like to suggest for the board that I think we're kind of, we're not framing this question properly. When we talk about rezoning, particularly for this plan, you know, part of the reason the zoning board recommended that we don't move forward with this plan was that they're for responsible development. I would suggest that this is not responsible development. This is development that is kind of straight out of 1965. On-site water, onsite sewer, no accommodations to deal with increases in traffic. So really, from my point of view, the question at hand isn't, are we voting on a change to the zoning today? But are we instead voting on a future tax increase? Because as others have pointed out, you can be assured that at some point in time, you will have to put in public water and public sewer. You will at some point in time have to address the roads that are barely adequate for the traffic today. So I would just ask that you bear in mind whether or not you are for a future tax increase to accommodate the costs that are really being shifted from the developer onto the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Epstein, if you'd like.
I just, Eric Epstein, 4100 Hillsdale Road. Would like to make a couple of observations that impact the school district. So I don't know who thought we were getting off track with the school, but I think that's the most precious entity we have. And this will impact the school. I did know Mr. and Mrs. Bonnetts. I went to school with Bobby and Leanne. I graduated with Bobby, so I was back on that property quite a bit, and it is a jewel. I think one thing that's missed is context here. Because I am on the school board and deal with real estate issues, I read the comprehensive plan for Dolphin, Middle Paxton, West Hanover, Lower Paxton, and Swatira. My question has always been, and we just, and I participate in the comp plan, why do we have them if we're not going to follow them? And, you know, one of the things the comp plan does is identify a direction we're going. If you look at the West Hanover comprehensive plan, Pike Town and Route 39 are designated as high density. So you're going to have the traffic. I mean, that's a reality. And the other issue is manifestly unfair not to know who the developer is. I mean, what is this cloak and dagger? I mean, this seems like something out of a really bad spy movie. Absolutely, you should know who the developer is. Let me catch my breath. So, to the woman who talked about enrollment, I'll give you my number. We're probably at about 12,800. We are at the breaking point for a number of schools. We just built Central Dolphin, even though it's 20 years, and that's likely to have an expansion. We just built West Hanover, and that's almost at capacity. So people are coming to the area, and when you, and Supervisor Lindsay and Supervisor Thompson and Mr. Gutshahl, Manager Gutshahl, wanted to give you your title. You know, we had spoken about when we do real estate, please think about the impact for the school district. And so as a former manager of the bus drivers, you're going to be adding a couple routes. And if you're adding routes in areas that are prone to flood, that's a challenge. In addition to that, you're adding routes in places that are poorly lit, and our challenge was during daylight savings. These are real. I mean, so when we're transporting children, and we get it right most of the time, it's an additional burden. I also would point out that, and you probably already know it, we are the eighth largest school district, and we have a student-teacher ratio right now that is manageable. So when you continue to add development, and I get it, you continue to increase the student-teacher ratio, which reminds me of the old Chinese proverb, no snowflake in an avalanche ever feels responsible. There's a lot of snowflakes out there. So, you know, I'd like to be able to commit to our taxpayers that we maintain the quality of education that we have. I think that's one of the reasons that people live here and move here. So I'm speaking not in favor of against, but getting back to the point that I've tried to raise, every time we do a development, it has an impact. And if you look around, what makes Central Dolphin so unusual is that we are not only one of the largest school districts in population, 12,800, we are also one of the largest school districts in terms of transportation. We cover 2.3 million miles a year. It's a lot. So again, I don't think this puts us over the top consideration. I hadn't intended to speak tonight, but it was hard for me not to. And I'll stay after if somebody needs information on the enrollment.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Does the board have any other comments at this time? Does the township engineer have any comments? And does the-
There's a hand.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little slow on the public comment section.
Sure. Could you please go to the podium and state your name?
I live in Lower Paxton. Wanda Beck. Wanda Beck, B-E-C-K, 6230 Parkway East. So my question is, why are the minutes from the two previous meetings not available to you previous to this meeting?
I'm sorry, is this related to the-
To this meeting? So it's not public comment, it's a question.
You mean the planning commission minutes that I mentioned earlier?
Yeah. Why aren't they available to you? Because we, hundreds of us, two different meetings, lots and lots of comments.
We have, we have staff that do the minutes for all of the meetings, and so they're trying to complete their work during the day, and so they do the minutes as they have time to do them. So they're usually running about two months behind.
Then this meeting may have been delayed, so you had time to digest those minutes and know more about what we're discussing, even in addition to what we've said tonight.
I personally watched YouTube, so, from the planning commission, so I got to see what was discussed.
Did everyone get a chance to know what we talked about in the two previous meetings? It would have been good, I think.
Yeah.
A lot of information came out.
We, we got, I think I got enough information. I think I know what the issues are, and I feel well-informed.
I feel neglected because we came out and brought up a lot of good information for two different meetings, but it wasn't available to you. So it's like what we all said didn't matter. So I'm not comfortable with that.
Ma'am, do you have any comments about this zoning amendment as of now that you'd like to make?
I feel that maybe you're, maybe you as a group missed out on some good information that is relevant to this zoning decision. So that, you know, I can't ask this question anywhere else.
It's a fair question, I think.
Why didn't you have the information available to you? You're going to make a choice.
It's a fair question.
We did have a lot of information, a very, a lot of very good information here this evening.
Yes, we did.
Yes, yes. The PowerPoint was excellent, and everybody that was here gave us the information. I feel that we need to make the decision tonight.
I wish you had had all the information. That's my only regret.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Thank you. Unless there are any other points to be made, which I see none at this time, I will-
Do we, does the attorney get to?
My apologies. Yes, sir.
This is Justin Coon from Integrated Consulting. He's the civil engineer on the project. He would like to make a few comments, basically to answer some of the questions and points that were made. But I have to say, you know, I used the word counterintuitive before about, about the application itself, but it is a bit of a conundrum. I mean, we have-
Can you go closer to the mic?
Sorry. I mean, people are concerned about development on the mountainside. People are concerned about stormwater. People are concerned about flora and fauna. They acknowledge that the property is able to be developed. I mean, the zoning that is in place now permits that. If anything, and I know this, I'm not, this is not meant as an insult to the people in this room, but I would think that what we're proposing, which is permitted under the ordinance as the overlay district, subject to your approval, would actually be welcomed by the area residents. There's fewer homes, there's less impervious coverage, there's preservation of flora and fauna and the hillside, preservation of steep slopes. As far as stormwater is concerned, it sounds like there are existing conditions. There are laws, federal and state laws regarding the stormwater discharge from a property during and post-development. We have to develop the property in a way that reduces the current flow. We cannot increase the rate or the volume. As far as there being a shadow developer, this is it. This is us. I represent the estate that owns this property. Hugh Simpson is a spokesperson for the estate. Justin is hired by the estate. This is us. But what I said in the beginning, I'll let Justin say what he wants to say because he's the technical guy. What we are proposing has a far lesser impact than what is permitted by right under that plan. And if I were a resident in the area, I would prefer the cluster development to the by-right development that goes up the mountain.
Please, please, let's give them time to speak. Thank you.
Thanks for having us. Yeah, I just want to, I think there was a lot of confusion at the planning commission meeting. You know, the, I didn't say anything when people were talking.
Please keep your comments and let the, the person at the podium speak. Thank you.
We presented plans to the township that were required by ordinance for this application. This was not a set of smoke-and-mere plans. We've met with staff multiple times on this. We created a yield plan. What could you do under current zoning? It doesn't mean that you could build 78 lots. You have to go perk and probe. The land will yield what the land yields. We've met with the township SEO. She understood that. She agreed, hey, it's a yield plan. Probably not going to get all of those, but we had to present something. Ordinance requirement requires a yield plan. This is technically, in a perfect world, what you could do. Do we think you could get 78? Probably not. Counter to that, we provided a plan. If you rezoned and allowed the overlay, what could we do? Well, in a perfect world, again, you could do about 63 lots. Do we think perks and probes are going to yield 63? No. Just like we don't think they're going to yield 78. But we had to show what you could do under current zoning, because that's where we're at today. We're not at perks and probes and well testing and all those things that we would be required to do. So the plans are not meant to, like you said, it's no shadow developments, no, this is the first I've actually heard this much pushback on what, an open space development. This thing would preserve that whole mountainside, it's 61 acres, plus the corridor of the streams and wetlands. That's a huge benefit. That yield plan, you could take the whole mountainside out today. We don't think that's responsible development. We think an open space development is much more responsible. That's really why we came up with what we did. It's nothing more than that. There's less roads, there's less sidewalk, there would be less impervious, and there's going to be less homes. And there's a lot of things presented, that were presented in the light that they wanted to be presented. But the one thing we haven't talked about is Dolphin County Planning Commission's letter, which also references the tri-county information. Dolphin County Planning Commission has recommended approval of this. They support this. So we talk about Dolphin County Planning Commission documents and tri-county documents. They all actually support this. There was some cherry-picked information that we saw. But Dolphin County goes as far as to say, the land use plan of Lower Paxton Township's comp plan, yes, identifies this as AR, along with the designation of open space development encouraged, the parcel is also including in the plan's developable lands designation. It's exactly what we're doing. The comp plan encourages open space development. They also went on to say that the tri-county regional planning commission's regional growth plan encourages the use of cluster development, zoning within recommendations of the implementation chapter. So they, so the cluster space, as they noted, would promote the creation of livable, sustainable communities where you're protecting natural features. We're protecting open space. We're dedicating open space. So I just wanted to make that clear, because we hadn't, we hadn't really heard that. And also, a little bit on the perk and probe. There's tons of houses in every township on lot septic. They weren't all built in the 60s and 70s. Some are being built today. I have a brand-new house. I'm on a well in septic. It's not unusual. DEP regulates this. One acre is the minimum. You have to have a primary and a backup system. So it's not as if you go in here willy-nilly and just place lots. The township SEO has to do the testing. Under DEP's- The township SEO has to do the testing, under DEP's guidelines. And the number of lots we get, we'll get, and they'll dictate the lot size and where the lots can be, and we would have to conform to that. I just wanted to address that as well. I also think, one thing that wasn't discussed, we have that flooding on Compton. We've seen the pictures. So a lot of maps show Compton Road coming through this site, but it's not public. It's really a private driveway. That connection, the Compton and Fox Hill and over to Parkway, would also provide another avenue, that that actual connection would be public, and there could be cross-use of that during those type of events to get down to Lingus Town Road. That was, that's just a couple items I wanted to address. I can answer any questions.
So I'm going to ask it one more time. You're the engineer. You guys are representing the Bonnetts. I'm going to ask one more time. Who is the developer?
My contract is with the Bonnetts family. They're, well, you can say what you want. That's who my contract, I've not...
I just ask.
I've, no, 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 but everybody laughs when I say that. I've not talked to any developers. I've not. I've only talked to Hugh, who is the spokesperson for the Bonnetts Trust. That's it.
I have a question. The concern was brought up at the lack of usable land, which, what was your response? That was the original PowerPoint, that there's a requirement, not just for open space, but usable open space. I'm sorry, open space.
Sure. Passive and active.
Yeah.
So yes, I mean, that is a hillside. There are parts of it that are steep. There are definitely parts that are also usable as well. It's not a straight cliff the whole way down. As shown in that plan, we've looked at it. You could actually get roads and houses on it that would meet township requirements. So do I think you can get active and passive rec land on that? Absolutely.
How about no central green area? That there's, it's trying to encourage centralized open space.
Obviously, we would be open to whatever, working with the township during land development. And maybe we could develop something like that.
And you had said about Fox Hill and Derek Compton?
Yeah.
So that goes into West Hanover Township. So West Hanover Township would have to approve that there would be an entrance coming out there.
That's correct.
Okay. So we don't know that for sure, because you really haven't talked to them?
Well, right now...
They haven't had it beside, they haven't had it in front of them.
Right, we're not proposing any rezoning in West Hanover. Though, of course, we haven't appeared in front of them. Roads are always a permitted use in a zoning district. We would be proposing one lot over there in West Hanover Township. We would file subdivision plan with a road connection, and we would have to work through whatever comments they provided.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Ma'am, I'll allow you a second comment, as long as it's not repetitive of your first comment. Please, yep.
It's Linda Lucas, 6707 Parkway East. I did want to, I did want to respond, because I did attend the other two meetings and was part of those meetings. I guess my, my first question in response is, if you can do all the things that you want to do with it zoned agricultural, and you're making it, you're, you're saying that it's better for us to do it, to, to change the zoning, I think we just keep the zoning as it is and, and let, let them go and get approved for what they can get approved for. I, I'm, I believe that we haven't, I think the one and a half acre minimum lots for septic and sewage is better. And I believe that they really have not presented a good argument as to why we need to change the zoning, because they're saying they can do all the things they want to do without changing the zoning. There's no reason to change the zoning. We open up, we're opening up a can of worms, because once you've changed the zoning, you lose a portion of the control, and now you're under different set of rules. And that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I see a hand in the back, sir, Mr. Stalter. Same thing I said earlier about the repetitiveness of your comment.
No, nothing repetitive. I wanted to address some of the things that I think were pointed at me. Cherry-picking of information. My PowerPoint has the source in it. You guys are welcome to click on it. It's a map. How did I cherry-pick a map? It's a rule of reserve. The letter that the gentleman referenced, we don't get to see that letter. We don't get to be part of those conversations. The Dolphin County engineer, he sat there, heard him say, well, yeah, this 63 is less than 78. And then your planning commission proceeded to ask questions and reveal how this really isn't 63 versus 78, and how at the end of the day, the reality of the perk and probe under the current zoning is going to lead to bigger lots and less houses, which we know, we think, we believe, right? We pooled money, we've spoken with land use people, we've spoken with land use attorneys. I don't have the money to pay them to be here, to speak. They laugh at that type of stuff when we present it to them. So I go home and I go, who do I believe? Do I believe the people who are spending a bunch of money or make a bunch of money off of this? Or do I believe the independent person that just went out and paid? I'm sorry that they feel that I'm check or pick, and that's unbelievable. That is just unbelievable. And, nevermind. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, unless there are any other points to be made, I will close the hearing and return this matter to the chair. Madam Chair, this is now the time for the board to adopt, if it so decides, ordinance 202406.
Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 202406, amending the township zoning map to accept the rezoning of land along Parkway East from agricultural residential to open space development overlay?
Can we comment? Before the motion, or you motion first?
Uh, excuse me.
You motion, then you vote.
Yeah. Motion first, second, and then the comment.
Right.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Okay. Motion is denied. All righty. Motion's denied. Next. Next, okay. Next on the agenda, we have improvement guarantees. There are, if I could just ask, if you are leaving, if you could quietly leave, we still have to finish our business meeting. And thank you all for coming and participating.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, they're not going to let me see them, because it says we're sorry. So can somebody tell me what the, oh, okay. We have the three improvement guarantees. Do I have a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Payment of bills. Mr. Miller will be explaining something on the payment of the bills before we make the motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, there is one bill that we are pulling from tonight's list for approval. It is check number 123496, in the amount of $986,907.06 payable to New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company. Just want to clarify, this is being pulled and it'll become before the board at a later date, most likely at our next October business meeting. There's some complexity to the actual bill, because it involves the township, the township authority, and Susquehanna Township for our 2024 paving project. So it just needs further analysis before we can send it forward for final payment.
Okay. So do I have a motion to pay the bills of Lower Paxton Township, Lower Paxton Township authority?
So moved, minus that bill.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Does the board have any announcements? Just a reminder, our Oktoberfest, Fall Fest, excuse me, on Saturday from 12 to 4 at George Park. Board members, any more announcements?
Oktoberfest would be more fun.
Oktoberfest would be more fun. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.